This time I will call this meeting to order. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. This is the roll call for the regular meeting. Commissioner Baker.
Present.
Commissioner Garretson. Commissioner Granados.
Here.
Commissioner Kowalski.
Here.
Commissioner Leon.
Here.
Commissioner Mirabella.
Present.
Commissioner Palmieri-Mudded.
Here.
Vice Chair Hudak.
Present.
And Chair Williams.
Here.
Chair, you have eight commissioners present for this evening's regular meeting.
Okay, would you now please lead us in the prayer and salute to the flag?
Humbly we ask God to give her peace and love her of charity to give the entire family of nations true agreement with his will and to grant the light of the spirit on all who work for justice and peace. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Clerk, would you now please read the statement of compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act?
The Chair wishes to announce that pursuant to the requirements of New Jersey statutes annotated Title 10, Chapter 4, Section 10 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting with the Board of County Commissioners, the County of Union, has been given by mailing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2022, along with periodic changes necessitated by circumstance to the newspapers circulating within the County of Union who are designated to receive such notice, and by posting the annual meeting schedule for the year 2022 in the Administration Building, and further by filing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2022 with the Office of the County Clerk.
Thank you so much. May I have a motion to approve the communications? So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Kowalski, seconded by Vice Chair Hudak. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Baker?
Aye.
Commissioner Granados?
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Mirabella?
Aye.
Commissioner Palmieri-Mudded?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hudak?
Aye.
Chair Williams?
Aye.
Chair, you have eight votes in the affirmative on the communication?
Thank you. Tonight, we have two ordinances on for first reading. Clerk, would you please read the first ordinance by title?
Ordinance number 841-2022, ordinance fixing the salaries of members of the Board of County Commissioners, the County Manager, County Council, and Department Heads.
Thank you. At this time, I will ask Fiscal Chair Granados to please move this ordinance.
Thank you, Chair. I move ordinance number 841-2022 for first reading and authorize the clerk of the board to advertise same in accordance with the law. The public hearing and final reading will be held on December 15, 2022.
Thank you so much. May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, that was seconded by Commissioner Mirabella. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Baker?
Aye.
Commissioner Granados?
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Mirabella?
Aye.
Commissioner Palmieri-Mudded?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hudak?
Aye.
Chair Williams?
Aye.
Chair, you have eight votes in affirmative on the introduction of ordinance 841-2022.
Thank you. Would you now please read the second ordinance by title?
Ordinance number 842-2022, an ordinance to amend the laws of Union County Administrative Code and Policies and General Legislation by amending Part II, Policies and General Legislation, Chapter 115, Safety Code, Article 11, Ban on Carrying Concealed Weapons.
At this time, I will ask Policy Chair, Vice Chair Hudak, to move this ordinance.
Thank you, Chair. I move ordinance number 842-2022 for first reading and authorize the clerk of the board to advertise same in accordance with the law. The public hearing and final reading will be held on December 15, 2022.
May I have a second for that?
Second.
That was seconded by Commissioner Mirabella. Would you please call the roll, Clerk?
Certainly. It's Commissioner Baker?
Aye.
Commissioner Granados?
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Mirabella?
Aye.
Commissioner Palmieri-Mudded?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hudak?
Aye.
Chair Williams?
Aye.
Chair, you have eight votes in the affirmative for the introduction of ordinance 842-2022.
Thank you so much. The meeting is now open to the public for the purpose of commenting on resolutions being offered for adoption and/or on any governmental matter that a member of the public feels may be of concern. Please state your name and your town of residence for the record, and if you are speaking on a resolution on tonight's agenda, please note the resolution number to which you are referring, and please adhere to our five-minute time limit. The floor is now open.
Hi, good evening. Sean Mullin from Westfield. I first have a question. I know this is a public comment, but regarding 842-2022, does that repeal any part of 840-2022 that was passed in November?
We'll take that up right after your comments.
Okay. So my comment is regarding 840-2022 that was passed in November. That was specifically regarding the prohibition of carrying concealed firearms on insensitive areas, which is essentially all county property. I'm a retired federal law enforcement officer, and I was disappointed to see that there was no provision in that ordinance to protect federal law enforcement officers and other retired law enforcement officers from carrying those concealed firearms.
That's actually what's in here, sir.
I'm sorry?
That's actually what's in here, sir.
Okay, great. Great. Well, I'm pleased to see that the county's taken swift action then to fix that ordinance, because it did contravene state and federal law. So pleased to see you've taken prompt action on it, and does it look like it's going to be passed in December, then? It'll be approved by the board at that time?
It'll be scheduled for a vote the next meeting.
December 15.
So December 15, okay. So I was concerned that it wasn't going to be fixed until January, which would probably bleed into February, and that was an unusually long period of time for that to be in effect like that with having folks like us at risk of arrest. So I thank the board for taking prompt action on that, and I look forward to a 9-0 vote at the December 15 meeting. So thank you for your time and your service to the county.
Thank you, Mr. Mullin. Okay, I think that resolved. Okay, the floor is still open.
Good evening, Chair, ladies and gentlemen, the Board, Bruce Patterson, Garwood, and Dr. Garretson, wherever you may be. Since the county is becoming litigious against anyone expressing free speech and who may be critical of them, I preface my comments moving forward as my opinion and with alleged and apparent adjectives. This puts a chill on anyone who would stand at the microphone to comment negatively regarding county operations and its shadow entities that have become, in my opinion, a total farce of self-enrichment, tax abuse, and possible corruption. Democracy has died in this room. I have reviewed the latest UCIA-approved proposals for mass construction and dig architecture. Again, we find there are major issues with these proposals, so open-ended with no controls, leaving much to interpretation, which later probably the UC government will have to cover with tax monies, no matter whose fault it is. I don't expect most of you to understand what I am commenting about. First, we find it's still in the design-build format with general contractor proposals which will be evaluated for cost performance. This originally failed the first time by the lawsuit that ensued last year. By now, it should be a full competitive lump-sum bid based on drawings be at least 90% to 95% complete, which is normal for lump-sum bids. Design-build gives too much leeway for bias selection through builder evaluation process. Example, they can easily select terminal construction again, him putting in a low bid and then making up the loss in change orders with no real oversight being generated based on incomplete dig drawings. This fully tells me that dig cannot handle the design of such a large project that, according to Bibby Taylor, now Executive Director of the UCIA who approved them, turns out just to be friends with her for 20 years, per her own statement. The dig proposal, nowhere does it indicate what completion level percentage are the drawings that they are designing to. This is a mandatory requirement, but there are no experienced people at the UCIA to catch this failing. This design level should be at least 90% to avoid lots of missing items that get to be change orders downstream with fat 15% to 20% markups for the contractors, plus addition of burden costs by mast and digs for their handling. In Dig's new proposal, he noted redesign of mechanical, electrical, and structural design. Obviously, it must have screwed up the first time. No one in authority catches this scope failure, yet he is now billing twice for the same work. From his proposal, he should be deducting the original cost of the initial mechanical, electrical, and structural design since he apparently screwed up for the first time and is now redoing it. The mast proposal, the work they are providing for 1.4 million is reasonable since they are only proposing minimal work at best regretfully. This could have easily went out for a competitive bid. Mast says he will be involved in the selection of the design builder, which it actually is a conflict since Mast is a GC evaluating other GC bidders. There also should be a schedule of values mentioned, which is given by the GC to bill against, nor control of prevailing wages, nor assurance of cost controls involved with proper paper flows and sign-offs from authorities. From Phase 1, terminal schedule of value was never scrutinized, so terminal had front-loaded schedule values just for some demolition and ground remediation. He was able to bill $9 million, which, in my opinion, probably cost only 4 to 5 million. So we are facing the same issue with no real cost controls in place. The government is fully supposed to be the one looking out for the public's interests. First and second-tier contractors and professionals do not have obligations direct to the taxpayers. Again, we are looking at an imminent failure of a project. This falls at the heel, at the feet of grossness management incompetence and inexperience. In other words, your Bibby Taylor must be removed from her lucrative executive position she has wiggled her way into. The profound failure I see is that she has a full-time job at the county as finance director, yet she now also oversees the shadow entity of Union County Improvement Authority, which originally had a full-time position up until one year ago, and there's no employees left in that authority for cost analysis. The public laughs at those that continue to support this failure. On to Resolution 1039 to mass construction for remedial work at the Ashbrook Clubhouse for 188 grand. The public knows that the clubhouse facade collapsed, and your department head, Armando Sanchez, suddenly disappeared, and also that there is some alleged collusion between him and a contractor. This sounds like criminality was involved, yet apparently he just swept it under the rug, enabling this criminality to disappear from public view, and now letting the taxpayers have to pay for your failure. The public demands to hear further details on this, Chair Williams.
Your time is up. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
The floor is still open. Seeing no one else, I will formally close this portion of the meeting and ask for motion to adopt Resolutions 2022-1003 through 2022-1047.
I make that vote.
Second.
Okay, the motion was made by Vice Chair Hudak. It's final motion, and the second was made by Commissioner Baker. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Baker?
Aye.
Commissioner Granados?
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Mirabella?
Aye.
Commissioner Palmieri-Mudded?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hudak?
Aye.
And Chair Williams?
Aye.
Chair, you have eight votes in the affirmative on all resolutions?
Thank you so much. We now come to Commissioner Reports and Comments, but before we open up for those reports and comments, I would like to invite Vice Chair Hudak to join all of us, colleagues and myself, for a small but very important presentation. Come on, everybody. Is this on? That's how you test the mic. So as many of you know, as I guess everyone here knows, Vice Chair Hudak has served on this board since 2011, right? 2010, even longer than I thought, but it's only a day. And of course, as you know, he was very successful in this past election, and he will be moving on to serve as surrogate for Union County, and I wanted to give all of my colleagues an opportunity to say a few words about what Commissioner Hudak has meant to them, what he's meant to this county, so keep it short, but, you know, and we do have a couple of things just as a token of our esteem as he moves into that new office, and I'm going to actually hand the mic to the person closest to me, which is Betty Jane Kowalski. Commissioner?
Thank you very much, Chair, and it's been my pleasure to serve with Commissioner Hudak, soon-to-be surrogate Hudak, for all of his time here on the board. He has brought integrity and good judgment to all of his decisions, and we especially have him to thank for getting us through the infrastructure grants, from which all of our municipalities have benefited, and I look forward to working with him further as he takes up his new duties. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I do also want to acknowledge Judge Hudak, who is here in our midst, and also Terry and Jackson and Katie, Chris's family. Commissioner Baker?
It's still on, right? Okay. Okay, well, look, I've known Chris longer than I have served with him here on the commission. I'm closing in on my first year of my first term, but I've known Chris for the 16 years that I served on Raway City Council, and in my opinion, he's been an asset to the county and certainly to the commission, and I do wish him well in his new position of the county surrogate. He's got some big shoes to fill over there. Thank you.
Well, Chris, I told you walking in today that I'm going to miss you, not only as a colleague, but personally. I know you're not going that far, it's just across the street, but, you know, for me, this is tough. We've served together for 12 years closely, and many years even before you were elected, and I saw a person who served as chairman of this board, vice chairman several times, and somebody who really cares about the people of Union County, and the diligence that you displayed, the hard work, the courage to speak your mind openly, was quite frankly refreshing to me and many others who keep an eye on Union County politics. And I know that you're going to be in a position to help so many people across the street as our surrogate. You're the perfect guy for the job, and I think you'll do a wonderful job, and I'll miss you, but I know I'm thankful that you're not going that far away. Congratulations on your decade-plus of service to our county. You have certainly left it better than you found it.
Chris, you have been on the board longer than me. You were here when I got here, and you have been a mentor to me from day one, and I always value what you have taught me, things that you have said. You have always asked the tough questions, and I hope that I can continue to do that as I continue to serve the board. You are going to do a great job as surrogate. Our county is lucky to have you, and I think the greatest legacy you will leave on this board is the experience that you've given your children, because having Katie and Jack as part of our family has been rewarding to all of us, myself especially. I adore them, and I think they've set a great example for my own children to get involved in public service, and I look forward to the day that Katie and Jack run for the board someday. So I really thank you for everything you've done. Thank you personally for everything you've done for me.
Is it still working?
I don't want to start crying, and I'm not big for words. You know that by now. I'm going to miss you, my running mate. Thank you for all the advice, all I've learned from you, and I know you're going to be across the street, but I'm still in denial, by the way. Okay? Thank you. Thank you. I've learned a lot from you, and I'm going to miss you, but you're going to come over, right? I mean, across the street, okay? Congratulations, okay?
Well, as the last speaker, did it to everyone else, that? No, no, just kidding, just kidding. Chris, your family legacy has been dedicated upon public service, your father, your wife, your mom, yourself. We know that you've been a true asset to the residents of Union County. Your family's been a true asset to everyone in Union County, and we know that in this new role that you're going to be starting in December, January, that you're going to continue to put the needs of residents first, and you're going to be someone who everyone can talk to during some of the most difficult times in life, and that's a platform that you ran on in making sure that you're always going to be there, you know, providing a crying shoulder, making sure that you're fighting for those residents, and making sure they get all the services they need during their time of need. So we couldn't ask for someone better than you in serving that role. So thank you for all your service here as a county commissioner, and we know you're going to do a great job as a surrogate.
And, you know, I echo what everyone has said, and I will say that Chris has been the greatest vice chair I have ever served with as chair, and we did get you a little token of, a couple of tokens of our esteem here, so I guess we can open these, right? Do we open these here? Yeah, we open them, and then...
Max's suit, Max's suit over there.
Yeah. And then I'm going to hand the mic to Chris so that he can say a few ideally nice words.
So, you know, the... We've always joked about wood-framed resolutions. This is...
I thought Jimmy was rapping.
That's impressive, really. Oh, yeah. I should go along. Scrunch it. Be with mine. Thank you, Tom. Perfect. One, two. I'm going to check my handiwork. One more. One, two, three. Thank you.
And this is a very special resolution, as you'll see why it was framed for you.
You should read it. At least the highlights. So this is the 2015 Infrastructure Program.
Which was instituted under Chris's leadership, so...
Thank you so much.
Yes, we can thank Jimmy had that very thoughtful thought, okay? And then there's one more.
I'm curious about the... Oh, no. No, seriously. Wow. Very nice. Fantastic. Thank you so much. I'm going to put down the golf ball. I have some comments I'll make from the dais in a few moments, if that's okay, Chair, but I just want to point out that I had the pleasure of serving as vice chair to two wonderful chairs from Plainfield, and it was a wonderful experience, but my wife reminded me this morning that it was approximately 12 years ago, about two weeks off, that was the first time I came in here as a freeholder, and I was being sworn in at the December meeting. My father was here. Katie was here, though not visible at the time. She would be, she would come out to the world in about a month, but I've really enjoyed this experience, and it's bittersweet today for me to leave this position because, you know, as we all know, the impact you can have on residents' lives. So I look forward to the new challenge, and I look forward to being collaborative. I have a few more things to say, but I'll go back to my perch. Thank you so much.
Okay. So now we will have comments from the Board Comments and Commissioner Reports, and I will start at my far left with Commissioner Leon.
Good evening, everyone. The Board of County Commissioners and the Department of Human Services would like to invite all residents to partake in the Union County Holiday Toy Drive. This initiative began on November 15 and runs all the way through December 15. We ask all of those that are willing to donate to drop off new toys at the Union County Administration Building Lobby. It is located on the ground floor at 10 Elizabeth Town Plaza. Residents can also visit our Amazon wishlist, which they can find the link on our website, our social media pages, to send toys to our UC Holiday Workshop. This event always brings the Commissioner Board great joy as we are able to be part of the holiday magic for the children of Union County. Any more information that you need, you can contact Natalie Hernandez via email or at Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Granados?
Thank you, Chair. In reference to the holiday season, the Department of Human Services Office for People with Special Needs and Disabilities is going to be hosting a special needs skating with Santa event that's going to be taking place on December 10 from 2:00 to 3:30 p.m. at the Warren Anco Sports Center in Warren Anco Park. This event includes light refreshments, free skate rental, and appearance by Santa, and presents for children courtesy of Move New Jersey Forward Foundation. This is a free event, but you'll need to register for a spot. Registration's online at ucnj.org backslash OPDSN-reg. Celebrating the holiday season at Warren Anco Ice Skating Rink is a community tradition enjoyed by the Union County residents of all ages and abilities. We're very proud to offer this event through our office and continue to provide additional services. For more information, please visit ucnj.org backslash special needs, online or call 908-527-4807. And then just making reference to Mr. Patterson's remarks before, when it comes to the IA, I believe, and many members of the county believe that Bibby Taylor's done a tremendous job when it comes to being Executive Director of the IA and making sure that it's being run the proper way and finding savings for the residents and communities of Union County. I just want to make sure that's well stated. Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Palmieri-Mudded?
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, everyone. The Board of County Commissioners would like to inform residents, we have our final scheduled emergency food distribution for the upcoming Christmas holiday. The food distribution will be on Saturday, December 17, at 8:00 a.m. at Kane University. This is a drive-through distribution, and all those attending to receive food must arrive in a car. The first 2,500 people will receive a special holiday food box and produce with all the trimmings. The distribution will function rain or shine on a first-come, first-served basis. Those that attend should bring a proof of residency such as utility bill, driver's license, or ID card with address. On behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, I would like to thank our partners, Village Supermarkets and Gargiulo Foods, for their continued collaboration in helping our residents in need of food resources. For residents that need assistance with food insecurity, we ask that they visit the Community Food Bank of New Jersey website at www.cfbnj.org/findfood. You can also text FINDFOOD or COMIDA to 908-224-7776, and information will be provided in seconds. And I also just want to make one more note to Katie and Jack Hudak. You are, we still expect that you're going to be coming to our events. I know we need you, especially at the food drives, and I know my children expect that you'll be at a lot of our events, so if you ever need a ride, you know who to call, but we hope that you'll continue to support the county commissioner events like you have over the past several years. Thank you again, Chris.
Okay, Commissioner Kowalski?
Thank you, Chair. We have a holiday family tradition that has come back to open, which is the Paul Mallory Railroad Center run by the Model Railroad Club in Union Township, and the holiday train show and open house opened up last Friday, and it runs on weekends until Sunday, December 11. So this is a chance for railroad lovers to get an up-close look at special trains in the club's huge 11,000-square-foot layout and included in the display... And included in the display are famous trains of the past, such as Santa Fe Super Chief and the Pennsylvania Railroad's Broadway Limited, along with Amtrak, Estrella Express, and, and many, many more. There's everywhere you look going into this facility, there's something, something to catch your eye. I happened to visit with three young friends under 12 last weekend, and the, the man who took our tickets said, you know, you can come back in if you, if you go through it once and you want to look at things again. So my young friends, for them going back in once wasn't enough. We did three tours of the place, and they still weren't really finished, so I think we may be going back again. But it's on Jefferson Avenue off Route 22 East, behind the Home Depot. You've probably driven by this a number of times. Uh, there's little signs if, if you put on your GPS the, the Model Railroad Center. And you can get tickets online at www.themodelrailroadclub.org. And you can also purchase tickets at the door on Saturdays from 1:00 to 4:00 at, at the club. And for children under age two, age two and under, it's free. So for more info, 908-964-9724. And once again, I think it's a, a great experience for young train lovers, and I hope lots of people will get there. It was, it was crowded when we went, but not so much that you couldn't get to see everything and get explanations from the club members who was there, who were there. Thank you, Chair. And, oh, also, congratulations to our new surrogate. Just want to add that. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Baker.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Please be advised that the Office of Public Health will be condensing their vaccinations on Tuesdays at the Warren Aiko Sports Center to one session from 1:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. starting next week, December the 6th. Going forward, the schedule will be, will be the following. Tuesdays, 1:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. at Warren Aiko Sports Center. Thursdays, 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. at Warren Aiko Sports Center. And Saturdays, 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at Plainfield High School. You know, to date, the program has had a great deal of success, and I just want to add, before I close on my remarks, that I hope that people still continue to take advantage of this public service. It's a vital public service, and, you know, we're, we're still, COVID has not gone away. Omicron has not gone away. So for those of you who have not taken advantage of this service, or have not visited a doctor or CVS or Walmart to get a shot, please take advantage of this opportunity and do this public health service, and, and do your neighbors a favor. So if you have any questions, please call Public Health at 908-654-9868. And before I close, I want to just thank the county manager and his staff for, for providing these live Christmas wreaths. I just enjoy the scent of evergreen. It reminds me of my childhood growing up. We've always had a, a live Christmas tree at home, so, uh, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Baker. Commissioner Mirabella.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The Board would like to inform senior residents and their caregivers that there are several Union County ASK community events in December. ASK stands for Aging Services Kiosk and is run by the Union County Division of Aging and Disability Resource Connection under Director Anderson. They work to promote wellness, independence, dignity, and choice for senior ages 60 and older, as well as their caregivers. Staff at ASK events can help seniors and caregivers connect with a variety of services, including home-delivered meals, respite care, home care, adult daycare, and support services for caregivers. Residents will be able to meet in person with professional staff for guidance on senior programs and resources available to them. Assistance also with filling out forms is provided. Any senior residing in Union County or their caregiver can attend any ASK event regardless of their hometown. No appointment or pre-registration is necessary, and here's the upcoming events. December 5th, Monday, in Westfield at the Westfield Memorial Public Library, 550 East Broad Street, from 10:00 in the morning to 12:00. Monday, December 12th, in Clark, at the Clark Public Library, located 303 Westfield Avenue, also from 10:00 to 12:00. And Wednesday, December 14th, in Elizabeth, at the main branch of the Elizabeth Public Library, located 11 South Broad Street, from 12:00 p.m. to 2:00 p.m. Bilingual staff will be available at the Westfield and Elizabeth events. To check for any upcoming ASK events, the Board of County Commissioners encourages residents to call the Division on Aging and Disability Resource Connection at 1-888-280-8226, or visit the Division online at ucnj.org/DS/Aging. And just on top of that, Madam Chair, I'd like to just say that I had a terrific time just last night with Commissioner Granados and Commissioner Leon at the sensory-friendly event, The Nutcracker, at the Union County Performing Arts Center. Also in attendance was our new director, Director Durbin Drake. I wish her good luck in her new position. And I'm really also just delighted that this program has continued to evolve and go on for children with sensory-friendly issues that want to enjoy a night out with their families. It was wonderful, and I encourage everyone to take a look at the Union County Performing Arts calendar and pick a show and go out in Raway, see a show, go out for dinner, and have some fun. And with that, Madam Chair, I'll conclude my comments.
Thank you so much. I'm not ignoring you. Uh, County Manager?
To Mr. Baker's comments, to be fair, it's actually Director Graziano and his staff at facilities who...
Oh, okay.
Put all this up into their hard work, so they deserve all the credit. And to my friend Chris Hudak, I want to congratulate you as well. You go back a long time. He's somebody I rely on for advice personally and professionally. You will be missed. You're going to succeed and have a great experience over there. It's good for the people of the county. And congratulations, and love you, brother. Take care.
Okay. With that, last time I'm going to say this, Vice Chair Hudak.
All right. Last, last bite at the apple. Uh, so good evening, everyone. You know, as you've now gathered, I will be resigning at the conclusion of this meeting, and I'll be taking the oath of office for the Union County Surrogate. And it's, it's a real honor for me to step into the shoes of Jim La Court, and, you know, I hope to be as trusted as a public servant, as well-regarded surrogate in courthouses throughout the state as, as Jim was. And certainly you have my pledge to ensure that every, you know, resident who comes to that office will be treated efficiently, compassionately, adherent to the law, and I hope to make a positive difference in that role. But before I take that step, I, you know, I wanted to reflect a little bit about the opportunity I had to serve here. And, you know, so first and foremost, I want to thank my family, who, who permitted me to do this. I, I think of you all as my county family, but, you know, they, they, they allowed me to be here and, and take a lot of time, nights and weekends, to go to events. And, and I know, I know the kids liked it and, and going to things and, and having such tremendous opportunities. I remember having that conversation with Al Mirabella when I first got here about, you know, it's, it's a really great experience having children while you're on the board because of the, the wide range of activities that the county partakes in and that your children will get to take part. And that was so true. And it, not just the fun stuff, because there was plenty of fun stuff, because we do a lot of great things when we talk about park and recreation. But I think some of the lessons learned in terms of public service could not have been achieved elsewhere, and, and I really am thankful for that. And I'm not going away, Kim, you know, so I, I'm not, I'm not, it, it's not a monastery. I'll be able to come out from time to time. Uh, so you'll, you'll, you'll still see me, but I, I appreciate how everyone's embraced my family, and I, and I thank you for that. And, and to you, colleagues, I've, I've served with, you know, 16 different, you know, commissioners slash freeholders over the years, and, and I really do feel that one way or the other, you learn something when you spend this much time in a board like this. You learn something, good, bad, and different from, from someone every time. And, and I've really learned such a tremendous amount from each of you, whether it came to issues, to politics, or just, you know, relationships. And the one thing I've always found is, well, the two things I've always found as being a, a member of the board here. One, we can disagree and, and not be disagreeable. And, you know, the, the, the joke, you know, is always, oh, you, we come to these meetings, and it's a 9-0 vote, and there's never any say, and there's no thought to it. But if you don't know how the sausage is made, you might not appreciate the difference of opinions at times on policy issues, going from, you know, parks to education to corrections to public ser-, you know, you know, human services. And, and I think we've always come together at these meetings, and, and that's really what the public sees, but there's a lot of work that goes into that. And I've also always found that if I had an idea or a thought, and, and I feel, and I'm sure that any of you felt this way, that was a good idea or something we felt passionate about in terms of public service, if I approached my colleagues and said, I have this idea, you know, we did the Runel Sale, and it was a great thing. It really was, in terms of putting the county on a strong financial path. But, you know, what do we do with those funds? How did we make that go? And to come and say, hey, let's give it away, and let's, let's turn it into roads and sidewalks. And people listened to it, and it, and it was great. And I've, I've talked to every one of my colleagues on this board about something that they were passionate about, and that has been, that give and take has been one of the best things about this particular job. We've, I've served with three county managers, you know, County Managers Devaney and Fiala, who I appreciate the guidance they gave me. But I want to thank Ed Oatman, who came into this role in 2018. And Ed has done a, a really strong job as, as county manager, and, and, and he's my friend. He's been a friend of the, the commissioners on this board, but he's also been willing to take tough stands when it comes to policy decisions and, and backing us up. And, and I've really appreciated that, as well as, as his deputy, Amy Wagner, who's, you know, been someone I really, whose opinion I really trust. And the directors here are fantastic to work with. Sorry. You know, and, give me a second. Because at the end of the day, every time I've talked to them about their programs, it's about the people that are serving at the lower level, who are working with the residents, whether they're in the parks or human services. How can I get a resource to my employee? How can I make something better for a resident? And how knowledgeable you are, and how you know your staffs and your programs. I'm in awe. I'm in awe. The last couple of years with the pandemic and the many challenges that have been present in public life and in administering services, I think there's a, a feeling right now about, you know, is government worth it? Are these institutions worth it? And I, I like to think that I played a small part, that this board has played a small part in reaffirming the value of what government can do in a really challenging time. When I see the food drives, even last week, you know, there's such a need. Debbie Anderson, Debbie Ann Anderson said, there's such a need. And when I see a line of cars from Kane University due to food insecurity, all the way down blocking Route 22, there's such a need. When we go back to the days of the pandemic, when there was food insecurity, with the need for testing, vaccinations, these are things that could not have just appeared out of a vacuum. It was because we had so many talented people in this government. And I'm so proud to have supported it. So I could go on, and I appreciate the time here that you've spent with me and worked with me, and I will support you as the surrogate, and I thank you for everything you do. So, Chair, with that, I'm done with my time.
Okay. So my comments, I would just like to begin, I will keep them very brief. I would like to acknowledge and recognize that today is indeed December 1st, World AIDS Day, and our County Board of Commissioners recognizes those in our community, in New Jersey, and all around the world who are living with HIV/AIDS. We remember those who lost their lives, and we support the researchers and other health professionals who are leading the fight to end the transmission of this still incredibly deadly virus. And we will do what we can, continue to work with those to ensure that equal access to healthcare is available to all those who need it. And then the other piece of information, actually, that I have is, under the terms of the Open Public Meetings Act, the Board of County Commissioners would like to announce that the 2023 Reorganization Meeting of our Board will be held on Tuesday, January 3rd, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. at the Union County Courthouse, located at 2 Broad Street, right here in Elizabeth. And the reorganization will take place in the chambers of assignment Judge Lisa Walsh. At that time, the Commissioner Board will elect a new Chair and Vice Chair for 2023. And also, I, along with my colleagues, my re-elected colleagues, Betty Jane Kowalski and Sergio Granados, we will also be sworn into our three-year term. I also want to, because I saw it on Facebook, I want to congratulate Commissioner Granados on his new engagement. So with that, you know, just a couple of final words about my, my vice chair here, about my friend Chris Hudak. I think all of the commissioners have said plenty, and it really is just kind of scratching the surface of, you know, what you have meant to this board and to this county with the work that you have done over the past 12 years, and that we know you will do over all the remaining years of your work here in the county. You know, as, as you so eloquently said, public service is not easy. It's very difficult. There are a number of sacrifices to be made. No one knows that better than Terry and, and the children. And it, it is incredibly wonderful that you do have that level of support from your family, from your dad, from everyone here. So once again, I just want to say to my own EC, and he knows what that means, congratulations, and we look forward to seeing you across the street. So with that, friends, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Moved.
May I have a second? Okay. Moved by Commissioner Leon, seconded by Commissioner Mirabella. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Have a good evening, everyone. Thank you.